Director Bill Salmar to lead us in invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Your Honor. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight with grateful hearts. We thank you for the beautiful weather that we're having. We just thank you for fall and we pray for a good harvest for all our area farmers now as well. And Lord, we lift up this city council to you tonight. I thank you for each member and their willingness to serve. I thank you for our fellow staff members too, and we thank you for the ability to work here. And we pray for your guidance, your direction in all that we do and that you give us ears to hear from you, Father. We left up this meeting before you tonight and invite you here. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where liberty stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Bill. Well, good evening, everyone. It's 5:30 September 18th, 2023, and we'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Yeah, here.
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 We have a quorum this evening, and the first item of business this evening before the council's approval of the agenda, and I will call on our city administrator, Andrew Brumseth.
Yeah, good evening, Your Honor, council members. We do have one new item this evening under new business. The information is on your desks. It's related to water use restrictions being imposed by the state of Minnesota.
With that, I would entertain a motion approving the agenda as with that addition.
So moved.
Thank you, Jim. Thanks, Scott. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Under public hearings, we do have one public hearing. It's a final cost hearing for City Project 5959 Stanton Avenue Reconstruction from Union to Broadway, and I'll call on our city engineer, Brian Javaro. Good evening, Brian, to introduce this topic before we open the public hearing.
Yes, good evening, Your Honor, and council members. Yes, I'm just going to go over a little bit of background information in regards to public improvement 5959. That's the street and utility reconstruction of Stanton Avenue from Union to Broadway. Prior to opening this meeting, like we have legal publication and individual assessment notices have been sent out to all benefiting properties prior to this final cost hearing. I have not received any written objections prior to this hearing, only general correspondence answering some questions. As noted, today is the hearing date, September 18th, 2023. Due date for the first installment is November 1st, 2023. The interest rate for these assessments is 5.25% with an assessment term of 15 years. The estimated special assessment rates are included in the notices for five-ton design residential is $87.12 per lineal foot. At the preliminary hearing, I just want to note that same rate was $95.60. The second rate is for commercial, 10-ton road design. That's the revised final assessment rate is $113.55 per lineal foot. Just to note at the preliminary hearing, this amount was $132.48, so overall a reduction of the unit prices. Moving on in the packet, oh, I just want to note too, all the individual assessment rules are in your packet too as well for your review. With the cost breakdown, the next agenda item we're going over will be the bid award, but those numbers are utilized to update these assessments and the total project cost. We're estimating a total project cost of $2,398,771.13. This concludes engineering, construction administrations, all costs known. Just to get a little bit more detail, the financing of this amount, we're proposing a PIR 429 bonds active street assessment of $265,325.37. City share 429 bonds as well, $39,345.8, and PIR 429 bonds for another city street share, this is for our 10-ton section, of $784,832.19. We're also looking for some sanitary sewer fund of $581,258. Looking for the water enterprise fund as well of $17,794. And of the storm sewer fund as well for their portion of $310,215.83 for a full combined funding rate of $2398,771.13. I just want to note that some of the above items may be included in the PIR bond for funding through the use of utility 444 bonds at direct combination of the finance tractor. And also want to note too, we may use, supplement some of the PIR to with general construction MSA as well. So if there's no any questions, Your Honor, I'm requesting that you open up the public hearing at this time.
Thank you, Brian, and we will do so. This time, the final cost hearing for City Project 5959 is open. Anyone wishing to speak to this project, please step to lectern and identify yourself. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Dwayne Cookman. I live on Stanton Avenue. I didn't hear anything about the Glacial Trail. Is that then shifted off to the side? It's not part of this then?
It's not a part of this project.
Okay. What other utilities, like natural gas, telephone, or other stuff, would be disrupted in that construction? Because I think that's on the boulevard or pretty close to where you're bigger.
Certainly, I think. Brian, did you want to answer that?
Yeah, in regards to private utilities, the private utility companies will be notified of the construction. They'll have to relocate or temporarily hold off on their utilities during construction. And some utility companies too will replace their lines as well. But just like others, there could be minor service interruptions, but very small interruptions of the service, so.
Okay. Because I know there's multiple different things, and you know, you just listed like water, sewer, septic, and that kind of stuff, but there's a lot of other stuff
Yes, there is.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dwayne. Others wishing to speak to the hearing? And just to follow up, Dwayne, so the Glacial Edge Trail has been pulled from this project in conjunction with the street, and negotiations are ongoing with the railroad as has been discussed with the property owners to locate the trail behind the property. So that'll come back as a separate project if and when we're able to make an agreement with the railroad. With that, anyone else wishing to speak to the... We'll close the hearing, and then you can have the floor, Scott. Public hearing is closed. Go ahead, Scott.
Well, again...
Will you get a resolution on the floor to adopt the final cost assessment?
I'll make that up.
Thank you, Scott. Tom, please, go ahead, Scott.
Following up on his question regarding the trail, though, I believe that that first block between Union and Vine does incorporate a piece of the trail, but only that far.
Correct.
Correct? So the residential portion isn't affected, but that one block of commercial area, the trail is included in that.
Thank you, Scott. Yeah, good point. I was referring to the residential area, yes. Other questions from the council? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Second item is a resolution awarding the construction of services contract for the City Project 5959 to CNL Excavating in the amount of $1,776,867.50. Took the words right out of your mouth, didn't I, Brian?
Sure did. Sure did. Yeah, so I'll just add to it a little bit. Yeah, these bids are open August 22nd at 2:00 p.m. The apparent low is CNL Excavating with a total base bid amount of $1,776,867.50. The engineer's estimate for this construction was $1,940,000, so favorable bids. We've conducted a post-bid interview and determined CNL's bid to be in order and responsive. As mentioned before, CNL's unit prices were used to update these final assessment rolls for the hearing we just had. I just wanted to note with this project, we have not had a pre-construction meeting, but a part of condition of the contract is a new water sanitary sewer service will be installed this fall for the old mill redevelopment. That's scheduled to be completed and patched. Majority remaining portion of the utility work will take place next year with substantial in fall of 2024. So there will be some interim completion dates, milestones the contractor must meet, but at this time, I'm just requesting award to construction services contract to CNL Excavating in an amount of $1,776,867.50.
Thank you, Brian, and we can authorize the awarding of that contract through a resolution?
Offered.
Thanks, Scott. Thanks, Tom. Go ahead, Scott.
So the date, you don't have no dates yet when they're going to start and when the projected finishes?
No.
Got quite a few answers or questions asked, and I said I don't know the answer.
Yeah. Councilmember Rachel, based on, I haven't, we haven't awarded, so we haven't officially had the pre-construction. I have been in discussions with the owner, so what we do know is doing the services for the mill this year, and given this time of year, they may mobilize in and start, but there are two misplants there.
I just tell people spring, and then I do...
I would say that's very...
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Any other questions before we... Yes, Bill, please.
And then just a side comment on this. As far as the financing for this, we would be bringing that back probably more in the spring, and we'll combine this like with the Summit Linden Laurel project that's being done exactly the same with special assessments, and if we come with another project between now and then, but rolling them all together in one bond issue, so we'll bring that forward, as well as the utility rate side will come later this fall with how these all fit into the utility rate models and the rate structures for those, so.
Great. Thank you, Bill.
Thanks.
Other questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. There are no bids to award this evening. Under petitions and communications, there are no petitions or communications, but we will have the open forum. Anyone wishing to speak to the council regarding an item that is not on the agenda is free to do so at this time. I asked that you step to the lectern. See no one, we will move along. The consent agenda, there are five items for consideration this evening. Anyone wishing to speak to any of those items individually can do so. Yes.
I'd question about three, if we could discuss that.
Okay, three. Anything else? I hear none. We can approve the other four items through a resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Brent. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Item number three is a resolution affirming the city of Fergus Falls, that the Fergus Falls, city of Fergus Falls satisfies the requirements of the Public Employees Retirement Association for future qualifying part-time police officers. You had a question, Al?
Yeah, I guess, could Mr. Hartwell maybe explain that and just kind of touch on that?
I would be happy to.
Thank you.
We have offered a part-time position to a licensed peace officer who's going to fill in as our school resource officer at one of our elementary schools, and it is not a full 12-month-year position. And in order for that particular position to be eligible for para as a licensed peace officer, we have to present this resolution to para, which does allow for part-time peace officers to receive that. That's what this is.
Okay, all I needed.
Very good.
Thanks, Mike. Someone like to offer that resolution?
I will.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks.
Thanks, Al. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Under ordinance resolutions tonight, we have seven items for consideration, the first being a resolution approving a TIF financing, I'm sorry, TIF development agreement with FM Bank, and I'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Brumseth.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, council members. Clara went through this in pretty good detail on Wednesday, so I'll just hit a couple of highlights. Back in April, this council approved the creation of a redevelopment TIF district, which encompasses the former Shopko site. Before you this evening is a development agreement inside of that TIF district, which basically spells out the requirements of the developer to be eligible for TIF, and then the schedule in which the TIF should be paid out. I'll just remind all of you, the increment in this case is to be used to demolish the existing blighted building on site, and that amount shall not exceed $286,000. Just one last comment related to timeline. The development agreement states that the project must start on or before April 15th of 2024, and substantial completion will be done by June 1st of 2025. So if there's any questions, we'll take them. Otherwise, I think we all know kind of what the project is and what the request before you is this evening.
Thanks, Andrew. Did you get a resolution on the... Someone like to offer a resolution?
All over that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom, Your Honor. Jim, have a resolution in a second? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
The resolution is approved. Next three items, four items, are going with the 2024 fee schedule and budget. Now, we're going to call on our city finance director, Bill Salmar, who went over all of this in depth on Wednesday for a high-level recap. First item is a resolution accepting the 2024 fee schedule.
Thank you, Your Honor. Within the packet, there's a couple changes, and they're in green or in blue colors from some of the discussion that we had, so I'll touch on those. This is what I'll bring here. So page two, the bottom of that, the additional plan review, moving that from $30 per hour to $65 an hour. That was brought up at the committee meeting, and to make that consistent with those fees in that area as well. And let's go forward here, if I can flip pages. On page seven, making the tower antenna changeouts and alterations $50, again, to be consistent with those same charges for land alteration and shoreline alteration that was above, and that came up at the committee as well. Page 10, under the refuse rates, tire rim removal. We pointed out that because that was a little confusing if it was for the tires, but it's for the removing of the tires from the rims, because we don't charge for the rims since those are metal. Page 12, we forgot to bring up kids camp. We were going to recommend that change, moving from 185 to 190. Again, we talked about how, for instance, wages for our summer help, we've gone up quite a bit, so we're raising that incrementally there from 185 to 190. I think that program fills in probably how many minutes? Four minutes maybe or so? So it goes rather quick. So $5 there. And then we had a little light bulb come on after we left committee with the community arena rates. We have under the time period, October through March, so the winter season. We're not going to rent that without ice. You have ice in both sheets. We don't have covers to go over the ice, so we're removing that section from there. That would only be under then the other season, April through September, where we rent it without ice. So again, sometimes you don't see the forest through the trees when I'm doing this. And I think that was it. So that was the additional changes besides what was listed in red then in your packet, what we went through on Wednesday.
Thank you, Bill. Anybody look for a resolution approving that fee schedule for 2024?
I'll offer that.
Thanks, Laura. Thank you, Scott, for the second. Questions for Bill? Roll call.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Item number three is a resolution approving the 2024 preliminary budget in the amount of $71,121,218, and again, we'll call on our finance director, Bill Salmar.
Yep, so we're going to ask you to approve that proposed budget that Ben just said, that amount at 71-plus million. The tax levy then will be the next item at 8,300,000. Just going to verify that with my slides, 8.3 million. That's the number we need to get to Ottertail County by the end of this month. So we send the proposed levy up to Ottertail County, and then we will also be announcing tonight and setting that through a resolution, that we're going to have a public meeting in December, on that first council meeting in December, December 4th at 6:00 p.m. or later. That goes with Minnesota State statutes. That's where we would have a public meeting and can take public comment. Much the same as we used to have truth and taxation hearings. They're no longer hearings. They're at a public meeting where you allow the public to comment. So that'll be on December 4th. So just very high level, our budget this year is much higher than the prior year. As we went through the various charts and graphs, the bulk of that big change is with capital outlay for some large projects. So the aquatic center at 10.8, 5.2 million for Daylagoon Park. Those both are funded through the sales tax, so that went in. That's on the revenue side. We'll issue bonds for those next spring. So when you look at the differences, increasing bond issuances, increasing capital outlay for those. Also then over at the dairy, the city is receiving $4 million for, you know, the trail, the crossings, the purchase between the port and the city. That was approved in the 2023 legislative session. We put that also in as capital outlay for capital projects, and then state bond funding for that. So that's the big change, why we're going from, you know, a 50-plus million up to a $71 million expense budget for that capital outlay. That is going to have some swings from year to year when you do large projects. Next year, that come back down some. We also do have street projects in there for just about $11 million. We will come back to you throughout the fall with that as we look at franchise fees that's in here, as well as another funding source to go towards those streets. We'll also be looking at all the infrastructure under those streets, and that's like when I mentioned with the Stanton project, of course, we look at that infrastructure, water, sewer, storm, bring that back in part of that financing package as well. We will use some cash for those definitely, but some bonding as well possibly, because we're talking very large dollars when you look at just 11 million for the streets. So that's high level. The city, we've also seen, you know, large increases in inflation throughout between wages to recruit, retain employees. Equipment costs have gone up a lot. So I'll stop there so I don't rehash the whole thing that we went through Wednesday, but so I do ask you to approve that proposed budget of 71,121,218. The levy of 8.3 million, that's an 8.76% increase in the levy from the dollar value. The tax rate when we estimate that isn't as high of an increase because of growth and market values and new addition of new construction. That's going up about 3.48% instead of that 8.76. We'll look at that. And speaking for the tax levy committee, again, I'll reiterate, the tax levy committee is going to continue to work between now and December with the goal of bringing that 8.76 down some as well. We can always decrease after tonight, but we can't go above. So we're setting the max tonight of where we can be. Tax levy committee, am I missing any high points there?
Anything to add, Laura or Scott?
Very good.
I think you did a good job when, as you mentioned, we went over this depth on Wednesday morning. But right now, we'll look for a resolution approving the 2024 preliminary budget in the amount of 71,121,218. Thank you, Scott.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Laura. Questions for Bill? Yes, Scott.
Not so much a question for Bill, but just a comment. As you mentioned, there'll be a public hearing in December, and yet if someone has a comment and wants to have some input into this, we have an open forum every two weeks, and they can certainly contact Bill or any others in the staff to, you know, have some input into any specific area here, correct?
Absolutely, and your tax levy committee as well, so, because we will be continuing to meet.
Yeah, we're continuing. I was just going to say, we're continuing to meet regularly, so.
Yep.
Again, it's Laura, Scott, myself, Andrew, and then Bill and Sandy are all involved in that process, so.
Excellent point.
Jim?
I would like to commend the tax levy committee for the great job that they've done. It's hard work. They've meant a lot, and possibly if it would be okay with the mayor, I would hope that maybe we could assign Scott and Laura for next year also, because they've put a lot of time into this now, and I think they should carry on through if they wish.
Thanks, Jim.
And it's a great learning process, but what you didn't fail, you failed to inform us is it was 10% flat cost of what it's going to cost increase, and we reduced it down to 1 or 8.76. So there's 10%, we couldn't do nothing about it. It was just fixed. So we worked on it, and we got it down, and we might get down some more. We're trying, so it's a very interesting job.
Thank you for that. That is key, that going through our fixed costs, so.
And was it Wednesday morning when someone mentioned that when you look at similar cities to ours in the state, our levy is right now looking like it's going to be quite a bit lower than than those similar cities?
Yep, and some of our peers, similar outstate regional centers, so.
Yep, so well done.
Like what cities is that?
You talked to Bemidji for one, Alexandria, was it?
Alexandria, Detroit Lakes.
Detroit Lakes.
I talked to Fairbo, I talked to, anyway, I talked to a number of anecdote, number of cities as well. And everyone's in a situation where there's a lot of rising costs for cities, that's for sure. So again, commending the tax levy committee on the work that they've done. Thank you both. So there is a resolution. In a second, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 No.
The resolution is approved. Item number four is a resolution approving the 2024 preliminary levy in the amount of 8.3 million. And again, we'll look for a resolution approving that.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Laura. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 No.
The resolution is approved. Finally, we'll have a resolution setting the 2024 budget and levy public meeting for December 4th, 2023 at 6:00 p.m. or later, right here in the Fergus Falls City Hall Council chambers. Someone like to offer that resolution?
All over.
Thanks, Scott.
Second.
Thank you, Tom. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Item number six is a resolution approving a conditional use permit for hemp-derived THC product sales in a B2 zone at 1603 Pebble Lake Road, and we'll call on Andrew Brumseth.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, council members. At your last meeting, this was on the agenda as well, and if you may recall, there was a resolution approving this that failed to get five votes. So under the rules of a conditional use permit, we have to bring it back and give some direction. So ultimately, there's four options that you guys have, and I'll just quickly highlight those. You can approve the CUP without conditions. You can approve the CUP with conditions. You can deny the CUP. If you're going to deny the CUP, you must state the reasons for denial. Or you can, if we fail to have five votes for any of these alternatives, we can ask for a 60-day extension. The 60-day rule applies to conditional use permits, and basically what the 60-day rule is, is that if the city council fails to act to approve or deny a request within 60 days, it becomes automatically approved. The 60-day rule deadline for this application is October 13th. If you were to extend it an additional 60 days, which you have the right and ability to do as a council, that pushes us out to December 12th. What staff's recommendations, what staff's recommendation is, is to approve the conditional use permit with conditions, and what those conditions could entail could be as simple as that the business is in compliance with all ordinances of the city. I heard some discussion after the last meeting that there was some concern related to having an even playing field, having clerks be 21 as required under our city code, and having the condition that they meet all of our city ordinances would ensure that all businesses are playing under the same playing field, because they would be following the ordinances of the city of Fergus Falls. And in this case, it would require, or in all cases, it would require that employees would have to be 21 years of age to sell these products, and individuals would have to be 21 years of age to enter the facility to purchase these products. In this particular case, that may create a little bit of a challenge, but it does give the business owner the opportunity to make some changes to comply with the ordinance. Separate to the conditional use permit, the council can discuss and change their ordinances at any time, so if the ordinance in question related to THC in this 21-year-old restriction is something the council wants to address now or down the road, they have the right to do that, but I don't want to complicate the two issues and talk about them as one. So that's the recommendation, approving this conditional use permit with the condition that the business meets all, or is in compliance with all ordinances of the city.
Thanks, Andrew. So with that, I guess as a starting point, I'm sure... So with that, I guess as a starting point, I'm sure we'll have discussion on this item. But is there a resolution approving staff's recommendation that the conditional use permit is approved with the conditions that they meet all requirements from the city?
I'll offer it.
Thanks, Scott.
I'll second.
Tom? Thank you. Okay, discussion.
I'll just, I'm going to support, I supported it before, but it's a lot better, more clarification now. And I agree that it probably was a little loose beforehand, but I'll support this. I'll vote for yes on this one.
Thanks, Scott. Laura?
Can you clarify, is there going to be a separate entrance with this?
Your Honor, Councilmember Job, if they are to comply with our ordinances as presented, which that condition would force them to do, they would not be able to sell these products until they have a space in which individuals under the age of twenty-one would be excluded. And they would have to have employees twenty-one or older to sell the products. So essentially, yes, if they're going to successfully do this under this conditional use, they're going to have to figure out a way to have a separate entrance to a space that would allow those activities.
Thank you.
That would answer the question I was at because I also thought in the ordinance, you had to be twenty-one to even be in the building.
Yeah, Your Honor, Congressman Thompson, that's correct.
Yeah, just clarification, that in that, in the, not in the, I should say in the building, but in that separate room of the building.
In that area, in that space.
Clarification, yeah.
And again, Your Honor, council members, you know, we don't need to have the ordinance discussion necessarily tonight because that's separate from this conditional use. I will say staff is meeting with Rolf on Wednesday to talk about some of these things related to THC. But if the council wanted to change the age from twenty-one to something different down the road, they reserve, you all reserve the right to do that. And this conditional use permit would be unaffected by that because they would then still be in compliance with those ordinances or they would need to be in compliance with those ordinances. So just wanted to point that out.
Would it make sense, again, not to confuse the two issues, but once the staff has those conversations about the, what the current requirements are, just to come back to the council with an up, you know, just a recap of that conversation? And if there are any recommendations of things that should be changed for the council to consider at that point? And then these that gives us that separates it from this issue, we'll get the recommendations of staff, including city attorney and the chief of public safety. And we'll have that conversation at a separate time. Fair enough. Scott?
One of the questions that I had, and it's been answered well here, I think, was just being consistent with our rules for others. You know, if it's going to be twenty-one to access and twenty-one to enter, then it needs to be that in this case as well. And with the condition that's been suggested, my question is, do we need to now offer some amendment? Or was that in the resolution as it's been presented? Where are we at in the process?
Yeah, it's been, it's part of the resolution that was made and seconded. It's the staff recommendation to approve the conditional use with the requirement that they meet all city requirements related to the sale of THC.
Great. Very good, thank you.
Everybody clear on that? Jim?
And I would not vote for it if that wasn't included.
Got it. All right, we're all clear? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 No.
The resolution is approved. Item number seven is a resolution requesting Mindot to prepare the final active transportation grant agreement for option three pedestrian crossing improvements by Kennedy Secondary School. And we'll call on our city engineer, Brian Uvarl.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, and let's, and let's come into meeting, I just presented to you, if you recall, Mindot awarded the city fully funded, well, excuse me, not fully funded, an amount of three hundred ninety-one thousand, nine hundred sixty dollars for the four option projects that's in the packet. The council also requested a contact to see if we can do an à la carte type and request a portion of the funds. And Mindot said, yes, we can. So in the memo, we requested that option three seems to rank the highest to not only the city, but the school as a need. So if that's acceptable, I would elect a portion of the, I would direct the state of Minnesota to prepare the agreement just for option number three. Our local share at the previous amount was seventy-one thousand, two hundred and fifty. But with just going with option three, our local share is twenty-six thousand, five hundred dollars of that. The school has agreed to pay half of that as well, so that amount. So at this time, the recommendation is authorization requesting Mindot to prepare the final ETA grant for option number three. And I'll open up to any questions you might have.
Thanks, Brian. Questions from staff? I know there was a question on Wednesday morning from our comment, I guess, of feeling brought forward by Councilmember Kwame. And I know Katrina Johnson's here from the bike pad committee. So I think we can have that discussion as part of, part of this discussion as well. But I guess.
Well, the comment I made at that time was that I don't think we'll get a better deal than this. You know, these other three options that are not being included here aren't going to get cheaper. And if we're going to be able to do these at some point or plan to do them, hope to do them, this would be the most economical time to do it. I'll support this as it's been presented because I do agree that this is the highest priority, single item of the four. I believe that it would have been a good idea to do the other three at this time.
Thanks, Scott. Brian, if, what's the time on this grant? I mean, I guess the question is, is if, if there are further conversations with the school district or other entities that, you know, willing to step forward and fund, does these grant? I mean, by accepting number three, are we saying no to the others if there were to be funding available or if the school?
Your Honor, I got to get back to you on that. I think that was on a two-year state fiscal year, twenty twenty-four and twenty-five, shift award to funds, we have to expend them. So the program has to be within that. So we have some time, but as far as notifying, I don't have an answer for you on that. So it'd be up to your discretion if you'd like me to check in on that.
Yeah, if we could check on that, but I don't think we need to delay. I think that there's obviously, this council has expressed a desire in the past to go forward with option number three. And that's the recommendation from staff, is that correct? Someone like to offer a resolution to that effect?
I'll make that.
Brent?
I'll second.
Scott? Thank you. Questions for Brian?
I had a question for Bill, actually. If he could remind us the funding on this.
Yep, so our, our half of the matching funds for option three, I'm proposing we take that from our leftover sidewalk budget. In our capital project fund from twenty twenty-two, we had fifteen thousand, fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars left in there. So that's looking at applying to that. And the reason we're not jumping on the others is because I don't have a specific source set aside for trails, sidewalk paths. So we're using what we do have. You know, if we were going to do something with different, we'd have to go back to the tax levy committee and look at that between now and December. So that's why I know it's kind of meaningful, but.
Thanks, Bill. Katrina, did you, I'm assuming you were here to speak to this item, so please feel free.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Katrina Johnson. I'm a member of the Bike and Pedestrian Committee, a subcommittee of the city council. I'm also, I was also part of the subcommittee that was formed related to this grant and helped apply for this money. The committee was comprised of private citizens, school and city officials, law enforcement and members of the B-PAC. The four projects that were, made it into the grant that were identified by this subcommittee were sought to have the most community impact and addressed very real safety concerns. We had a long list, and so it was brought down to these four. A mistake was made in the due diligence of the match that was needed for this grant. However, let's put that, I just wanted to put that out there. But we are still being responsible financial stewards for the citizens of Fergus Falls by investing in the entire project as it was initially applied for. The total investment of seventy-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars will have an impact that's multiplied by six for the community of Fergus Falls. We want to be a shepherd of a positive relationship with Mindot. And we want to be known as a partner that is well-prepared and able to execute projects that we're receiving funding for. I feel that if we do not accept the entire grant, we are not just walking away from two hundred forty-six thousand dollars, but we're jeopardizing our relationship and opportunities for future funding. It's possible that we may not be able to apply or receive future grants. I work in nonprofit financing. I know how grants work. You're given a grant. If you don't spend the whole thing, they think twice about the next time that they give you that grant money because you didn't use it all, weren't prepared for it all, things like that. The concerns related to each one of these projects won't disappear. We didn't pick these lightly. So not funding them now doesn't mean they go away. We'll still be seeking and wanting to address these projects. It will just become harder and more difficult, especially when we turn down funding that was put right in front of us.
Thanks, Katrina. So there's a resolution on the floor. Moving forward with option number three. And it looks like that's the way the council is going. I would just advocate that we continue to talk to our partners that are, that have interest in these projects and see if we can convince them. Because I think Katrina is right and Scott's right. You know, this is, this is, if we, if we're, if we're going to have a bike pad committee that's going to make recommendations based on safety to the council and go out and get three quarters or whatever it is of the funding, I think that I would like to see us act on that. But that's not, that's not the resolution on the floor. Katrina?
Could I make one more comment?
Please do.
I apologize. My nerves got the best of me. I just want to, you know, put the dollars out there. The unwillingness to find forty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars means we're walking away from two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And it seems like we could put some effort into trying to find where that may come from. And so my ask of you is to reconsider your resolution of moving forward with only one. I don't like that they're called options. They weren't ever options until we decided to break them apart. It was a project that we applied for funding. And consider moving forward with funding the entire project.
Thanks, thanks, Katrina. Okay, so there's a resolution on the floor. Any further questions before we call for the vote? Roll call, please.
Thompson?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Fish?
Yes.
Joe? Yes.
Juan? Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. Under presentation of claims, bills tonight in the amount of two million, six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred dollars and ninety-one cents. If anyone has any questions, we'll call on our finance director. Or we can offer that.
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution. Thank you, Jim. Second that?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Tom. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Fish?
Yes.
Joe? Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. There are no board committee department reports, there are no reports from staff or administrative officers, there is no old business or unfinished business that I'm aware of. Under new business, there's an item brought forward by the state of Minnesota regarding water use restrictions. We'll call on our public works director, Guy Taylor. Good evening, Guy.
Good evening, thank you, Your Honor. Unfortunately, we're in a position similar to where we were two years ago, July of twenty twenty-one, where lack of moisture has made the state put in water restrictions. At that time, it was statewide. This time, it's just for the Red River watershed, so basically the northwest corner of the state. With that notice given by the state, the city water use plan requires that the council pass a resolution to implement water restrictions. So we'll be asking for that resolution. The restrictions that will go into effect is lawn watering only in the overnight hours, eight P M. to eight A M. And that would only be on a odd or an even day, according to what your address is. And also car washing would be affected by that. And we're in a position now where no feeling of swimming pools isn't really much of an issue.
No.
Things that won't be restricted would be watering of gardens, flowers, newly planted trees or shrubs, or newly sotted or seeded yards. The restrictions would go into effect as soon as they're published and we would publish them right away on the city website and on Facebook. And they would be, remain in effect until the state gives us notice to withdraw them.
Thank you, Guy. And there's a recommendation from staff to pass a resolution to this effect. Someone like to offer that?
I'll offer it.
Thanks, Tom.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jim. Excuse me, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. The resolution is approved. Lynn, do you have any announcements? Anything else? Announcement?
I got an announcement. There again, town hall meeting this Wednesday, the twentieth, at the Center for the Arts from six o'clock until eight. The CEO of KLN Family Brands, Kenny Nelson, will be here to speak. And a lot of people are pretty excited about that. I think it's a positive movement and to make it, get everybody to work together. Thank you very much.
Any other announcements? Anything else to come to the council? Without words, John.